Thanks as always, appreciate it.
Thanks so much, Scott.
Here and Now is a production of NPR N W B U R. I'm Scott Tong in Washington, D.C.
And I'm Peter O'Dowd in Phoenix. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from Indeed, designed to be an end-to-end hiring solution to help businesses attract, interview, and hire candidates all from one place. Learn more at indeed.com/NPR.
If corporations start to believe that consumer demand is going to be persistently slower because of all of these rate increases that the Fed has been making, they might actually start to change their behavior, eat into those big profits, and charge lower prices. And that would help inflation to moderate and could potentially make it easier for us to achieve that sort of mythical soft landing.
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
Weekday evenings at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
Programming support for Radio IQ comes in part from Bell Electric of Blacksburg, Class A electrical contracting since 1981, residential service and commercial construction, electric vehicle chargers, backup generators, and more. Bellelectric.com. And from Gentry Lock Attorneys, committed to outcomes that matter for clients and referring professionals. Offices in Roanoke, Lynchburg, and Richmond. More information at gentrylock.com. And from listeners like you.
Radio IQ is broadcasting and digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WBTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Funding for Here and Now comes from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software, accelerating the pace of engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com.
From NPR and WBUR Boston, I'm Scott Tong.
I'm Peter O'Dowd. It's Here and Now. Coming up, disaster aid is flowing to some people affected by Hurricane Ian in Florida.
Those who are larger in number, those who are the easiest to get to, those who are, you know, already connected to government. But the challenge is, how do you get to those who are disenfranchised?
And our look into scandal at the Reagan administration's EPA continues. Today's episode, Congress digs into suspicious inactivity at the agency.
All of a sudden, they closed the doors and said, "We're not going to let you have any documents." And that's when I smelled the wrath.
Also Reagan-era tax cuts and trickle-down economics. It's a theory that never goes out of fashion, but what does the evidence show in the real world? Coming up here and now.
First, the news.
Live from NPR News in Washington, I'm Nora Rahm. President Biden says he's disappointed that OPEC Plus has decided to cut oil production by 2 million barrels a day starting next month. The news comes just weeks before the midterm elections, when inflation and gas prices have been a top priority for many voters. NPR's Esma Collard was mort.
The president told reporters that his administration is looking at what alternatives are available. He was asked if Venezuela was one of those options.
There's a lot of alternatives we haven't made up our mind yet.
He did not specify what those alternatives might be. One of the president's top economic advisers, Brian Deese, said the White House--
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order, and I will-- as a clerk to call the rule, and following that, I will lead you in our invocation. And I'll also lead you in the pledge of allegiance. So, Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Here.
Mr. Beszic. And Mayor Lee.
Here. Thank you. All right. Would you please stand for invocation. Let me ask as we stand, before I do the invocation, I'd ask that we have a moment of silence today for in memory of Mr. Carlos Ponderix, a coach and local tennis legend who passed away on Wednesday, September the 21st, 2022. And in 2008, I remember being part of the event where the city renamed the tennis courts at River Edge as the Carlos Ponderix Tennis Courts in his honor and for the entire ballot. And he enriched many lives of young people by the game of tennis. And he taught for many years at Patrick Henry High School. He helped many young men and women get into college, specifically at the time, Arkansas A&amp;M. But the college is now called the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. So, he's a special person in our community. So join me in a moment of silence, please. Amen. Thank you. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come to you this time first and foremost to say thank you because we recognize that we stand here today not because of anything we've earned or deserved, but it's because of your grace and your mercy. For that, we say thank you. And Lord, we ask you at this appointed time to guide and direct us as elected officials and appointed officials that we may do the work that we were called to do by the citizens of this community. We thank you for so many things that you've blessed us with. And Lord, we ask you to bless those in our community who are dealing with issues as it relates to sickness and disease and all of those families who are bereaved right now. We ask you to strengthen and encourage them. And we give you praise and honor because you're worthy to be praised. It is in the name of your son that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank each of you for being with us this afternoon. This is our, well, our second session. We had briefings earlier today, and we're meeting again this afternoon. And I want to remind you that council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RVTV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. And council meetings are offered for, or offered with closed captioning for the depth and heart of hearing. And before I go any further, I want to recognize Mr. Clarence Greer, our deputy city manager who's sitting in today for manager Bob Cowan. All right. Presentations and acknowledgement. And I'm going to ask my esteemed colleague, Ms. Vivian Sanchez Jones, to join me at the podium. You want to read it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. We have a proclamation, and I'm going to ask my colleague Vivian Sanchez Jones to read the proclamation.
It is with great pride and joy that I read this proclamation. Casa Latina Roanoke Valley Month, where as Casa Latina Roanoke Valley serves the Spanish-speaking community in the Roanoke Valley and beyond, partnering with 27 local, state, national, and international organizations to provide services tailored to supporting the community by offering information, education, and support. Whereas the mission of Casa Latina Roanoke Valley is to help members of the Latino community achieve their goals through education, cultural activities, community building, and direct access to essential services to meet critical needs. Whereas Casa Latina Roanoke Valley provides resources and programs to contribute to the wellness of being of native Spanish speakers through workshops and classes for youth and adults. And whereas the Casa Latina team is comprised of teachers, students, professionals, homemakers, and community leaders who give the community a brighter future. Now, therefore, I, Vivian Sanchez Jones, on behalf of our Mayor Sherman Lee, Sr., of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, commend Casa Latina Roanoke Valley for the diverse contributions to the vitality of our community and do hereby--
Who claimed?
--the month of October 2022 through out this great--
All-American--
--settlement--
All-American.
As Casa Latina Roanoke Valley Month.
Yeah.
Chris, will you call and give that? And everybody that wants to come up here? Oh, how beautiful. Madonna. I am bossy number one. She's number two, and she's number three. Thank you so much for this beautiful tribute, for the honor of being recognized. Vivian and I started out in 2002 with the dream that resulted in Casa Latina Roanoke Valley. We dreamed, and we talked, and we planned, and we couldn't have done it without all these folks. We couldn't have done it without all of you. And we love all of you, and especially Madonna too. I love you for all you do-- Thank you. --for the Latina community, which is also for the community at large, because the stronger the Spanish-speaking community is, the stronger the whole community is. So, thank you so much. And thank you, everybody, for all you do.
Thank you, Vivian.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Well, now, Madam Clerk, I think we're down to the section of hearing citizens, hearing of citizens upon public matters. Is anybody signed up to speak to us this afternoon?
Yes, sir. We have four speakers.
Okay.
And the first speaker is Barbara Dirk. And, Ms. Dirk, you have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, city administration. I am Barbara Dirk. I am a citizen of Roanoke. I am here today because I don't, I know how important you are, and I don't know how you deal with all the emails and communications that you get. I was deleting, 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 and all of a sudden, an email caught my eye, and it was from Cox Conserves Hero. And I opened it, and it said, "We need a nomination for 2022." And I thought immediately of my friend Frida Cathcart. I called her, and in 2,000 words, we sent in her nomination and waited anxiously to hear about if she was going to be selected. Well, she was, and she was selected as one of three adult heroes nationally. So, Roanoke, Virginia has a finalist in the Cox Conserves Hero competition. There's three categories: adult hero, youth hero, and organization. And Frida Cathcart is representing us as adult hero. Please, I'm asking you to support her nomination, that she has been working for us. She ran for and was elected as a director for the Blue Ridge Soil and Water Conservation District and has been using her talents there to bring, bring attention to, to what's happening with the water concerns in the Roanoke Valley. She's documented the Mountain Valley Pipeline polluting the habitat of our endangered log perch, which is in the Roanoke River, and she's forcefully advocated on the state and federal levels for environment. She's worked with the General Federation of Women's Clubs to bring their knowledge of environmental concerns. She's worked to save endangered woodlands from development in Roanoke City. She's educated neighbors and civic groups about how the woodlands protect our streams and endangered species from stormwater off. And think flood here. Think flood. Think the VTC Carillion Complex and how by addressing the stormwater runoff upstream, we're able to protect that and Carillion Hospital. So, you stay in touch. With a lot more emails than I do, I'm asking you to stay in touch and yourselves and to encourage others to go to www.coxenterprises.com backslash Cox Conserves Hero and vote for Frida Cathcart, the Roanoke representative for adult hero under Environmental Services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frida Cathcart.
Are you going to read?
Yes.
Thank you. I really appreciate Barb nominating me for this honor. I was very humbled and really surprised to find myself one of the three national finalists in the competition. So, I just wanted to make sure that you all understand that the opportunity that this presents, all the finalists get to pick a nonprofit of our choice to receive the grant award. The award amounts, third place is $5,000, second place is $15,000, and first place is $30,000. And the charity that I picked is the Virginia Soil and Water Conservation District Educational Foundation, which is a nonprofit and is classified as a 501(c)(3). It was established in 1990, and the mission of the Virginia Association and its foundation is to provide and promote leadership in the conservation of natural resources through stewardship and education programs. The foundation coordinates conservation efforts statewide to focus effectively on issues identified by local member districts, like the one that I serve Roanoke City on. Funding for such activities, such as the Envirothon and Youth Conservation Camp, is provided through donations made by individuals, corporations, organizations, and other foundations, as well as fundraising efforts. Contributions to the Educational Foundation are used to support educational efforts within the Commonwealth and are tax deductible. So, by voting for me, it helps bring more money in to that very worthy cause. And that is why I hope that you will do your best to promote this. I hope that you'll vote yourselves and encourage other people because I would love to bring the most money back to this worthy organization. I have participated in their programs and learned so much. They give me so much hope when I turn on the TV and I see all the devastation from Hurricane Ian or what happened in eastern Kentucky and know that people, the staff of that Educational Foundation and the support that they give, their individual members and districts, is what's going to make the difference in providing a path for us out of this climate emergency that we're in and to a brighter, sustainable future. And I know there's a lot of doom and gloom out there, but this organization really brings us to a pathway to health and prosperity and sustainability. And I'm just, I'm very excited to have this opportunity to sing their praises, and I really hope that they bring home the big bucks. And I also wanted you all to know, if you hadn't heard, that in December, the Virginia Conference of Soil and Water Conservation Districts is going to be here in Roanoke at the Hotel Roanoke. And applications are being accepted now, and anybody can attend the conference. So, if you all are able to, I hope that you do and help spread the word about that. I'm excited to be attending that, and I just really appreciate representing the citizens of Roanoke City on the board and look forward to working with you going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations. Our next speaker is Lisette Alexandra.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're welcome.
Do we have an affordable mic that we could get her to use?
That's, that's one. You can give her that if she, if she--
Okay. I just want to make it as convenient for you as possible.
Yeah, just take it out.
Thank you. The inconvenience was gonna be--
Apparently, that needed to be corrected. See, I didn't mean to make it a reason. Okay, let me see.
No, I'm not a bad-- Okay, I can be a-- How many of you is there? It was 16 of you. I'm sorry.
I was here last with Mayor Bowers and Mr. Lewes' vice. And I ran after Mr. Lee, and I caught up with him. But I'm here today for another reason. I cannot move. I'm extremely sick. And I don't have time, much time to go on, but I need to bug you a bit before I go upstairs somewhere. Okay. I have had many strokes, so I may not be as clear as I want to be. And I have to look at my notes. This is about mainly trash recycling and snow. The trash employees have been superb. I know Mr. Barber. I've known him for many years, and he's an excellent employee, an excellent person. And the trash is always on time and well done. On the other hand, the recycling, the recycling people, I don't know where they came from lately because I've had my container and it takes me a hard time to fill out the container to take mini bags and dump there. And the trash was there since December until, I think, May, I think. The recycling was full there. I called and called, nobody appeared. Then it was taken on time. I don't know when. And, sorry. And last time, it was back in August or something, I went there to see Mr., I don't remember if it's Brian or Ryan, A. Worth something. It's not worth much, but he is, his name is Anthony Worth. And I talked also to Melissa, nice lady, but I got from them that the recycling, recycling employees were not under control. I don't know why. Either they do it or they don't. Brian or Ryan, I think it's Ryan, I don't know. He even smirked at me, smiled, smiling. He hasn't known me for a long time because I'm a bit of a pain when things don't go, you know, at least 75%. And he was making fun of me, including stating that he would send me a small trash can to fit my needs when there are no trash cans. That one is huge. I cannot move it. I live alone. I have nobody. One day, if you smell something in the air, it's me in the house, there. The next door neighbor, which started using the, I don't know what you call it, to go back to the house and get, you know, help. She has the containers in front of her front door in violation of code, but they are always emptied. I don't know if she knows, important people? I don't know. The last person from recycling that went there, they had left the container in front of my house. Then I called Melissa and told her I cannot carry the container to the back. I think they should be in the back because not to be visible. And then, I guess, the same employee went there. I even thanked him. I always do. I try to see them and thank them for their service. And he dropped the container at the end of the yard, and I have a big yard. Okay, I'm going too slow for you. So, that is a big problem. And I don't know, I have had a house, and I can't go to the basement because I cannot go through stairs. I have had part of my house full of recyclables, bags and bags. Now, if you may change into snow. I don't know what you can do, but the trucks, the snow, the truck drivers love me. They want to move in with me. So, it was a lady. I don't turn that way yet. You know, maybe one day. Oh, she, the one I saw closely was a lady. I stood in front of her five years ago. I carried boiling water to the pile of snow in front of my driveway and melted it with-- it's my big business. I'm dying, so can I? I like you.
Go ahead.
Four years ago, I planted myself in front of the truck. That's when I saw she was a lady. She was honking at me, but I stood my ground, as they say now. And she had to go around. Three years ago, I parked the car at the edge of my driveway. Three years ago, I parked the car at the edge of my driveway. It should be the other, I miss the weather of the year. But I guess last year, I waited for eleven years until the pile of snow went up. And this year, I have an angel, which I don't know if I'm allowed to say the name or not. I can't see him well, but there was an angel, a saint or... That helped me because I had had cancer surgery and I needed to go for a doctor's appointment in Charlottesville and I couldn't get out. I was totally blocked. And that angel with his wings opened the way for me to be able to get out. I wrote to this angel, but I don't, I don't think he has internet because he never answers. It's high up there. So I have to send again to that angel, give my thanks. I would like to ask to the angel if I could say his or her name. Guess not. God knows who you are. You sir or ma'am, whoever may be, should be in charge, should be mayor. I'm pointing at anybody. I'm pointing at everybody and the person knows who he or she is. You sir or ma'am will have my vote forever. Because nobody has done that for me, including my family. I guess I'm done now and I thank you. I, I don't know if you can help. If you can't help, I'll go up and I am higher and I go to the Pope. I do. Francesco, Mary Berga, I can ask him. You have a nice smile, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you, ma'am. And we're going forward with your comments to a deputy city manager and he'll follow up on all the issues that you raised.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Yes, I'll be Latin people still here. The ones that spoke here, the Latinos.
Yeah.
They say something extra, you know. When I go get to hell, I don't love you anymore.
Well, you...
You don't, they don't speak Latin. I do and I'm not at least. You are not Latinos, you are whites. Latin is not a race, it's a language. You are white people that speak Spanish from Spain and people that came from Spain or Portugal are whites. No matter what race you are. Thank you so much.
Gracias.
What did you guys say about the video?
Yeah?
All right, thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
That was all the speakers.
It was all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we now move down to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. All right, I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Bespich.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the consent agenda is approved. Our next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have none. Item number six is petitions and communication. A request of Fields of Hope and Dreams Mentoring LLC to share information on its services, initiatives, and activities. And this is sponsored by Vice Mayor White Boyd and Councilmember Sanchez Jones. And I'll call on Mr. Fields for the presentation and, Mr. Fields, you'll be allotted ten minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First, I would like to say thank you to the Mayor Sherman Lee, Vice Mayor Trish White Boyd, and members of city council for allowing me the opportunity to come speak on what Fields of Hopes and Dreams Mentoring LLC does here in the Roanoke community with children, youth, and families. I am Marvin Fields, the chief executive officer of the company. And just to give you some background on me, I have my master's degree in community clinical psychology and have led and directed many youth and adult clinical programs at the state level, ranging from therapeutic day treatment, mental health skills building for adults, and intensive in-home services for youth and families. I've also worked in treatment foster care, but I saw the need to do more. So on August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, Fields of Hopes and Dreams Mentoring LLC was established. I started this company because I thought to myself, there is more that I can do in reference to helping children and young adults shape their minds towards success by eliminating negative behaviors and creating pathways of positive pro-social activity with others inside of their community. I also saw that too many children, too many children are making negative decisions that have led to costly consequences for them and their families are left to deal and endure that pain of what happens to them. So once again, I saw the need for change. In our company, we utilize an evidence-based program called KC Life Skills, where we conduct an initial assessment questionnaire that our clients complete and it helps determine what their life skills needs are and where we should focus on helping them. It helps us create an individualized mentee plan for working with their social emotional behaviors and giving them more life skills. Now, these categories are assessed as follows. Daily living skills, self-care skills, relationship and communication, housing, money management, and transportation, work and study life, career education and planning, civic engagement, navigating the child welfare system, and looking forward. We work with our children through the Roanoke City Court Service Unit as well as the Roanoke Reset Program under Mr. Lloyd Merchant. We also have CSA contracts through Roanoke City, Roanoke County, and Salem. We provide youth with consistent caring mentors who they will learn life skills from and develop core values through exposure to different opportunities, life coaching, and programs within their community. We help build character and life skills through one-to-one mentoring, advice, coaching, role modeling, as well as group mentoring. We have some excellent mentors with clinical backgrounds who invest their time in listening, building trust, establishing a relationship with the youth and their family, and guiding these mentees through our group sessions and our individual sessions. Those staff are Dr. Kirby Spivey, Ms. Lynn Thomason, Mr. Darrell Beatty, Ms. Donna Page Egerton, and Mrs. Spivey, who conducts our parent groups. She's a certified life skills coach. She conducts our parent groups and well, as we also have an educational tutoring as well that she conducts as well. Because we have found out that sometimes our children act up in school because they just don't comprehend what's going on. So therefore, we take the extra time to actually educate them after school. So therefore, we'll have a better student, a better child in the community, and a better child at home as well. And before I leave, I want to give you all our mission statement. To influence change positively and effectively in the lives of youth by providing guidance and life skills and education while creating learning opportunities and developing coping skills that will aid in leading a productive life. These opportunities will promote character development in youth through sound advice, coaching, and guidance in his or her life in a positive manner, through individual group mentoring to aid in recidivism reduction through an evidence-based mentoring approach that focuses on rapport building by understanding the mentee as well as the family dynamic to truly, to truly affect change. We have had so many success stories where our kids, they come to us broken, but when they leave, they're better because they start to see themselves as better. The families are on board and we start to see their progress in school, in the community, see them graduate from school, see them get jobs because they're learning those life skills. And that's what we do at Fields of Hopes and Dreams Mentoring LLC. Our slogan is "Together, we can make change." Thank you all. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Before you go, Mr. Fields, before you go, I'm going to call on the people that sponsor you, Vice Mayor White Boyd and Councilmember Sanchez Jones, if they have any comments they'd like to make.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fields, I just want to say congratulations and thank you for doing what you're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Number one, being EBA certified, that's evidence-based associate, I like to be able to quantify what is being done. I mean, you know, you've got a history and you can do that. And I was there at the, at the first session, I think you did, on September twenty-sixth. I think Mr. Cobb was there as well.
Yes.
I was truly impressed with the number of people that were there and the engagement that you had. You know, Stevie had done an excellent job, you know, being candid about his story and telling it like it is, and those kids were able to relate to that.
Yes.
And I think they got a lot out of it. I'm glad you're connected with, with the schools and with the Reset Team. My question is, how do individuals, or is it churches, or how do they engage with your program? What do they need to do in order to become a mentee?
All right, they can actually, there's three ways now. The first way is if they are already court involved, then they'll probably be working with myself or another vendor. But if they're not court involved, we are about prevention. Therefore, I was talking about Mr. Merchant. I can actually call up Mr. Merchant and say, these are the things that we're seeing with this child. And if he has room within his program, within the Roanoke Reset Program, we possibly will be able to work with that child, whether it's an elementary child or a middle school child through his program. He also has the apprenticeship program in which they can get a job through that apprenticeship program, but they also have to have a mentor to help continue to guide them on those life skills. And also, parents can actually reach out to me as well because if there is a child who does not have any services, who may not come to Mr. Merchant's program and doesn't have court service involvement, we can also schedule an emergency FAP meeting as well. If there are things that are going on with this child, CSA may be able to fund what's going on so we can mentor that child for three to six months, possible.
Yeah, that was what I was getting at. I wanted to know how it would be funded and whether or not there was any grants or, you know, how you could help individuals who may not be in any of those programs or don't have the funding. And you said you have some other, you have options.
Yes, yes, ma'am, we do.
Well, I'm really proud of you. Like I tell you, I remember you from years ago in your fatherhood. He was pastor at Trinity Missionary Baptist. He's like, you remember me from back then. I remember you from way back then. And I know Pastor Fields would be really proud of what you're doing right now.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for doing that. And I think Mayor said, Ms. Sanchez Jones and others on the dice might have some questions.
Okay, no problem.
Hi.
Hey, how you doing?
Well, Marvin, I'm really proud of the work that you're doing. And I wanted to ask you, do you think this, this will be something that we, I'm going to put my other hat, a student support specialist could work with?
Yes, definitely. A lot of our kids come through the Roanoke City School System. So there's a lot of things that we can do to continue to support, even when it comes to attendance.
Okay.
You know, because students who are not at school, they don't pass. Students who are not at school, when they get back to school, sometimes they have a behavior issue because they're not understanding the education that's going on because they haven't been there. So what we can do as student support specialists is to continue to make sure that they are coming to school and make sure that we're giving them that proper guidance to stay in class and giving them that counseling that they need to understand that you have to be in class. You have a mind to do well. We just have to continue to just push them and encourage them and motivate them and find their strengths. We work from a strength-based approach. A lot of times, kids hear so many negative things about themselves that it defeats them already before they get into the classroom. But if they hear their strengths, they are able to succeed.
And how could we refer students to your program?
You can take my card, you send me an email, and then you would just give me kind of what some of the issues are with that child. And if that child is, already has court involvement, we'll talk with possibly probation officers or talk with Mr. Merchant if they don't have court involvement, or we can take it to CSA FAP as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me call on Ms. Price, and I think this is appropriate time. He mentioned broken and you remember that line? I want you to repeat that.
I was going to bring it up. Yes, sir, yes. Mr. Fields, you know how proud I am of you.
Yes, ma'am.
And we go back even further.
Yes, ma'am.
When he was dead. So, you know, anything that helps to develop our children, I am all in favor. And as a former, well, I can't even say I'm a former because I still feel like I'm a school counselor at times.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's one of my questions and I'm glad Vivian brought up, you know, your relationship with the schools. My question is, what grade level or age do you start working with children?
Four to eighteen.
Age four.
Yes, ma'am.
So practically from cradle on up to age...
Yes, ma'am.
I love it.
Because if we started early, then we could prevent some of those behavioral things that happen when they're around twelve.
And you hit it right on the money.
Yes.
It's all about prevention. And what the mayor was alluding to, I always, I live by a quote from Frederick Douglass. It is easier and that I said, put in and cheaper to build strong children than it is to repair broken men.
Yes, yes.
So you're doing just that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I will definitely be in touch with you, dear.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. One thing we want is just, sometimes you work with a kid for three months and then you may have to stop. So we want to try to get more sustainability because when we see their progress and then they may have to stop services, you know.
Well, that's what I want to touch base with you because I'm working with fourth and fifth graders at Hurt Park Elementary School.
Okay.
I want to touch base with you a little bit more.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, Ms. Moon.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I was impressed with your, your program outline and your curriculum.
Thank you.
And you mentioned your mission statement, but I went further on down and I looked at your philosophy.
Yes, ma'am.
And that I did, I supported that by providing youth with consistent caring mentors.
Yes.
They will learn life skills and develop core values through exposure of different opportunities, life coaching, and programs within the community.
Yes.
By providing them with a safe, nurturing, and supportive environment in which they can develop all tools needed for success in life.
Yes, ma'am.
That hit me and this is what I support and I advocate for in the community, just what you are doing.
Thank you.
And when you mentioned that it's hard for children to comprehend something because they don't have their skill set. And that's what your program is there for.
Yes, ma'am.
And to start from, as my colleague here said, almost from the cradle.
Yes, yes.
I think because we have little four-year-olds do act out.
Right, they do.
And so you can get them early.
Yes.
And help them. And I also like the part where you're working with the parents as well, as to bring them in with some coaching skills.
Yes, definitely. And I'm so thankful for the parents that we've had. They've been so supportive in working with their kids and they've, anytime we've asked them for something, something that they needed, we needed them to do, as far as reiterating what we're working on, they've done it and we truly, truly, truly appreciate it. It takes a village.
Yes, it does.
It takes a village. It takes the parents, it takes school teachers, school counselors, everybody, you know, within that circle to make sure that child is successful academically, behaviorally, and emotionally.
So I have to truly say, you get, you get it.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on what I'm reading here, you get it.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for presenting today.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all so much.
All right, we're going right down the line, Mr. Cobb.
Okay. Don't run away, Marvin. Okay. Thank you so much for being here and I just echo what the Vice Mayor said about the presentation you all sponsored with Weeby.
Yes.
Stephen Jefferson.
Yes.
But the way in which you all were able to keep the youth engaged in the conversation and actually for them to, you know, have, have interaction with him, that's not always an easy thing to do.
Right.
And so you created a really healthy environment for that to happen.
Thank you.
I had two questions for you.
Yes, sir.
One is, I know you work a lot with Corner Springs.
Yes.
What are, what are one or two things that if you were in charge at Corner Springs, what would you do differently there, engaging with the youth?
I think they kind of have a program called Post-D that they have a therapist come in. I don't know how often that is, but what I would say is if a child already has a relationship... I don't know how often that is, but what I would say is, if a child already has a relationship with a life skills coach or mentor, if that child goes to Corner Springs for a little bit of time, maybe a month, maybe two, having that mentor come in there and work with that child for at least an hour a week in a room that they do have, and work with them still on life skills training, because they need it to utilize in there as well as in the transition when they come out. So if it's, if they don't have that, you know, things maybe, maybe come the same way when they get out, because they still haven't had those skills taught to them while they're actually in the place that they possibly don't want to be, because we want to prevent that.
Right.
There's been too many, too many deaths that I've seen, ranging from fourteen to sixteen years old in this community alone, and that is disheartening. So whatever we can do, and we want to do it, because it's about the kids.
Right.
It's about the kids.
The last thing is, would you be willing to just share a brief success story?
Yes, yes. There was a, when I first started the program, there was a young man I was working with, high school young man, didn't have any zeal, any sense for life, and, you know, just wanted to, you know, kind of engage in some things that were, that were not good, substance abuse, things of that nature. But within the first three months, no, two months of him working with me, I started to see a shift in his mindset, because I began to point out what his strengths were. Even though he had gone through a rough life and was still going through trauma, I started to point out what was good that was going on and helped him see something good about himself. Eventually, over time, after spending time with him in the community, he actually started going to school, because it was a attendance issue at first. He started going to school more, even has a job now. Even has a job now and is talking about going off to school because the boy has basketball skills. I mean, he can get to any college just on that alone, but that's not what it's about. It's about your education as well. And when he came to me and said, "Mr. Fields, Mr. Fields, guess what? I passed this in the class." He had an F when he first started, then he had a B when we ended. So that just goes to show you that we care about what's going on within the school, also what's going on within the home, and it takes everybody, but it takes consistency, it takes time. It took time. I worked with that young man for nine months. Normally, you don't get that long to work, to do mentoring, life skills building, but I worked with him for nine months. You know, the judge said, "No, I want this to continue. I want you to, I'm sorry, to continue working with this young man." So I continued to work with that young man, and we saw so much progress. And even today, when I see him, he says, "Hey, I still got my job. I'm still doing well. I'm still balling. Are you gonna come see me sometime?" Like, "Yeah, I'll come see you sometime. I might beat you in a little basketball." But, you know, that is, that's something that I hold dear to my heart, because there was a lot of time spent with that young man. There was a lot of things that went on in that young man's life, that he could still be on the street doing certain things, you know, and getting himself in trouble, but he's not. He is motivated, motivated now. So I just, I just appreciate that.
Wonderful story.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Now, when is your next forum, like the one we attended on the twenty-sixth?
The next one, we're gonna have a female come and talk to the females. We're thinking in November.
In November.
I'm actually talking with a few females now, and we want the females, the young ladies, to come out, and she wants to talk with them about her life story and what she has been through to get to where she's at now. She didn't always make the best decisions, but she realizes that, hey, if I've already walked this life, it's my job to tell you, no, no, baby, you don't need to do this. I've already been there and done that. You may not come out like I did, so therefore, let me go ahead and show you another way right now, so that we can cease and desist, and we can start promoting better behavior, because we are losing too many of our young men and women. And this Rono community is small. It's small. So we want to do everything we can do to continue youth getting better and better and making better decisions cognitively. They have to cognitively refrain their thought process in order to do that, and it's our job to help them see themselves in a better light. When I look in the mirror at myself, I want to see greatness. When I wake up and I go outside of my house, I want to see greatness. I want to be great. I want to surround myself with people who are great as well.
Well, you make sure you get that information to our clerks so that you can disseminate it to all of us, those that can come, would like to come. I mean, that's, that's the most impactful thing, is for them to hear from people that have actually lived it and gone through it. And I could tell from that last forum, and I'm sure Mr. Cobb would agree with me, that they were really interactive and they were really responsive to Weeby. And so, thank you for doing that.
Weeby made a great impact. If he's watching, Weeby, I appreciate you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Fields.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
All right, we're now down to item number seven, which is reports of city officers and comments of a city manager. Item number one is a city manager briefing, and I'll call on Deputy City Manager Rhea to introduce the briefing.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of City Council. As you know, each month, we provide an update as to our efforts to reduce gun violence within the community. For this month's briefing on the Gun Prevention and Prevention Framework, we're gonna have Captain Morris provide his report from the Rono PD regarding their efforts, and then we'll have presentations from the Gun Violence Commission chaired by Councilmember Joe Cobb. Chris Roberts will provide a years-over view of his program regarding the Start City Safe program, and then we'll have the Gun Violence Prevention Commission grant recipients, TAP and Kingdom Harvest to come in acknowledgement of grants and participation, or presentation. And we have Captain Morris here, right next to us.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
It's gonna be very hard to follow Mr. Fields' enthusiasm and passion. However, we will touch on two cases that show just how important his work is in the community, what I discussed with you today. So I'll provide you with the gun violence enforcement update. This covers September 1st through September 27th. During that time period, we confiscated thirty-six firearms, which were seized. That brings the year-to-date total to two-hundred-and-eighty-seven firearms. We served one-hundred-and-seventy-two felony warrants and three-hundred-and-seventy-five Mr. Mayor warrants during that same period. There were four incidents of note involving gunfire. The first is September 3rd, 2022. Officers were notified of reports of shots fired in a thousand block of Palm Avenue Northwest. Responding officers located a male subject with what appeared to be a critical gunshot wound outside the residence in that area. Fire EMS personnel pronounced the male subject deceased on scene. That individual was later identified as DeMario Saunders, fifteen of Roanoke. That investigation is still ongoing. On September 4th, our officers were notified of a person with a gunshot wound in the six-hundred block of Harrison Avenue outside of that residence. Fire EMS transported that man to Carillion Roanoke Memorial Hospital for treatment. No arrests have been made, and this investigation has been closed due to the victim's lack of cooperation with our detectives. On September 12th, Rono Police were notified of a person with a gunshot wound had arrived at Carillion Roanoke Memorial Hospital via personal vehicle. The officers responded to speak to the adult male victim, who had what appeared to be a non-life-threatening injury. No arrests have been made, and this investigation has been closed due to the lack of the victim's cooperation with our detectives. And then on September 17th, officers were notified of a person with a gunshot wound in the fifteen-hundred block of Shamrock Street Northwest. Responding officers located an unresponsive juvenile male outside of the residence with what appeared to be a critical gunshot wound. An officer provided aid until Roanoke Fire EMS personnel arrived and transported the juvenile to Roanoke Memorial Hospital. Unfortunately, the teen succumbed to his injuries a short time after his arrival at the hospital. Preliminary investigations indicate that this incident was accidental, self-inflicted in nature, and no further updates are available at this time. So there are two juvenile males there that show that the work that Mr. Fields does is critically important to our community. Of note for arrest and enforcement information, on 9:15, our officers made a traffic stop and encountered Siobhan Stevens, who is a known gang member to us. The officers located drugs and a firearm and seized those items. He was arrested for possession of the firearm while in possession of Schedule I and II narcotics. On 9:16, our officers went the area of the Embassy Inn when they located a vehicle that was connected to a shooting in Salem. The officers observed the vehicle and located the driver, who was the suspect in the shooting incident from Salem. Officers attempted to stop the driver from leaving in his vehicle, which led to a foot pursuit. The officers apprehended Kendall Turner on an active warrant and also charged him with possession of a firearm while in possession of a Schedule I, II narcotic, and a Glock 22 firearm, and methamphetamines were seized from him at that scene. On 9:15, our officers conducted a search warrant following a large drug distribution investigation. The officers recovered three firearms, a large assortment of heroin, fentanyl, and methamphetamines, as well as thirty thousand dollars in cash. The suspect in the investigation was arrested. And on 9:21, our officers were conducting the investigation in regards to a brandishing offense. The officers located the suspect in the incident and located a firearm that had been concealed inside a residence that the suspect was staying in. The suspect, Mr. Mark Gray, was found to be a four-time convicted felon and arrested for felony possession of a firearm. Of note for our court proceedings, two Roanoke men involved in the fatal shooting of Jacob Aldridge, nineteen of Salem, at Eastern Avenue in the city of Roanoke pleaded guilty last week in federal court to their roles in the shooting and related drug trafficking activity. Chad Matthew Custer, twenty-three, and Aaron Lee Woods, twenty-eight, both pled guilty. Both men pled guilty to one count of each possessing with intent to distribute and distributing one hundred kilograms or more of marijuana, and one count of discharging and possessing a firearm in furtherance of drug trafficking activity. Mr. Darian Harvey previously pled guilty to similar charges, and he was sentenced in May of 2022 to twenty-six years in federal prison. Custer and Woods both face a mandatory minimum sentence of ten years in prison and a maximum sentence of life prison. Thanks to our partnership with the FBI, the U.S. Attorney's Office, Virginia State Police, the ATF, and the DEA, these men are behind bars, and we greatly appreciate the ongoing commitment and collaboration as we work to keep Roanoke safe. Of last note for our prosecutions, on September 19th, 2022, Abdul H. Flewellen, thirty-two of Roanoke, pleaded no contest to manslaughter charges regarding the August 2020 death of Malik Sims. Flewellen was sentenced to serve a total of ten years on this charge. While this sentence does not reflect the value of the loss of life in this instance, it is also not indicative of the amount of work that the Roanoke Police and the community put into solving this crime. We commend the actions of all RPD personnel who were involved in this case from the beginning. Their quick actions, dedication, and hard work identified the person responsible for the crime. And lastly, I have the Reset deployments. So for the month of September, Reset deployed four times. During the deployments, that included two follow-ups regarding the homicides that we talked about and the accidental death of the juvenile via the gunshot wound. We averaged four volunteers, and we spoke to an average of ten residents and individuals that we came into contact while the Reset team was canvassing the area. And that's all I have. If you don't have any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Captain, I asked you something. The firearms that were seized this year, how were they confiscated? How did that?
So when officers come into contact with individuals that are engaged in criminal activity or drug trafficking, obviously, we'll run them to determine whether or not they're a felon. However, just having those weapons in possession of those Schedule I and II narcotics is a crime, and so those weapons are confiscated, and they are then taken, logged into the evidence room at the Rono Police Department, and that's where we hold them until the trials.
Okay. In your opinion, most of the criminals that you apprehend and arrest that are in possession of firearms, is it, your position that most of them have illegal, those guns are illegal that you confiscate?
Yes, yes. Most of the time, we find felons in possession or people that are not, that are prohibited from possessing a firearm.
And how young, you don't have to be specific, but the general age group that you find these firearms, well, I guess the point I'm trying to get to, young people, are they, you know, what I'm hearing on the street is young people are, most of them are packing a gun somewhere. Is that seen to be the case?
That would be accurate of the individuals that we come into contact with and arrest for these charges, yes. Most of them are probably under the age of thirty.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I had. Any other questions, Captain?
Stay safe.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, thank you. Thank you for taking me around on the night out. I enjoyed that. Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Mayor, before we go on, I did miss one speaker. If we could go back and take that speaker, she let me know that I had missed her, and we do have her. Dr.?
Yes, ma'am. We don't want to miss anybody. Who's that?
Dr. Bandori.
Come on up.
Thank you. I'm gonna have Mr. Sperlaza, if you don't mind, if he can give you a few handouts, since I didn't have time to. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I am Dr. Tina Bandori. I have been thirty years in the field of special education. So everything he said, ditto, except turn the hat for special needs. These are adults with special needs. Currently, I'm the Executive Director of No Bounds LLC, which is an academic-based program to develop life, academic, vocational, and employability skills for adults with intellectual and developmental challenges. And we operate from the Rono campus of ECPI University, and the president was here, but he had to leave. And thanks to his insightful personality and understanding of people with disabilities, we are in the ECPI campus, free of charge, have access to all their facilities. And when I say intellectual disabilities, I want to explain one thing real quick. Your, whoops, all of your intelligence is one-hundred-and-ten and above. The population I'm talking about is sixty-nine to forty, very specifically. So they, they look like normal people, two good hands, two good legs. They have the workforce we need, they just need help getting to it. More than twenty years ago, a native son of Roanoke, Senior Justice Lawrence Elkunz Jr. of the Supreme Court of Virginia once observed that individuals with intellectual challenges, and I quote, "have substantial limitations not shared by the general population, and a moral and civilized society diminishes itself if it does not afford recognition and consideration of those limitations in a meaningful way." This statement was later quoted in an opinion by Justice John Paul Stevens of the United States Supreme Court. A whole generation later, our society still struggles to provide adequate recognition and consideration to our intellectually and developmentally challenged citizens. Intellectual development challenges do not choose who they go to. They are born with this. They can be born to a very wealthy family, they can be born to a family with nothing. Intellectual disability does not choose. The No Bounds program presently serves eight Roanoke citizens, along with ten others from the Roanoke Valley region, providing them with academic, vocational, employability skills instruction to prepare them to be productive members of society while providing them with a sense of accomplishment and self-esteem. Even this small number, however, strains the resources that ECPI is able to provide so gallantly, free of charge, including the volunteer instructors, meet Mr. Sperlaza. He is there every day, and he, he is never taught in his life, but it is citizens like him that have given so much respect and value to these young men that come to the facility. We have over one-hundred Roanoke citizens on a waiting list to be accepted in the program, and over two-hundreds from neighboring communities, including Salem, Vinton. I even have a student from Covington and Roanoke County. Can we serve them and make them valued citizens of the value? I totally believe we can. The mission of No Bounds is to embrace inclusivity, dignify diversity, and understand equitable opportunities through the world of people with intellectual challenges, that it's possible. In this effort, we hope to build culturally responsible communities one day at a time, and our program addresses not only the needs of the students, but their families. In fact, after here, I am going to go do my rounds with my students' families and make sure they're okay, because tis the season to have meltdown. sure they're okay, because tis the season to have meltdowns. So I'm going to go do my rounds. Their families, peers, and potential employers. We are currently working with Advance Auto to get them employed, and I'm trying to build other businesses to get interested in what we do. And the village, like you said, still reigns. The No Bounds at ECPI, the No Bounds at ECPI program has recently been recognized as a Special Olympics Unified Champion School, the first college and university-level program to be recognized in Virginia. I mean, we have so many universities. Somewhere along the line, we should have had a unified university, which means people with intellectual disabilities are unified with their college peers, and they play bowling, bocce, soccer, or anything with their actual college peers. ECPI gave me the place. They also gave me the students. Several No Bounders, there were, Virginia State sent a team to World Games, USA Games in Florida, and nine out of the 45 Virginia State team were No Bounders. And that was the first time Southwest Virginia had sent any athletes to the USA Games. And they came home not only with medals for their athletic achievements, but memories and friendships. Obviously, I could speak a great length about the satisfaction and rewards I gained for heading the No Bounds program, but given my limited time, I should get to the point of my address to this council. It should come as no surprise that services for adults with intellectual challenges are extremely scarce or rare, not just in Roanoke, Virginia, but throughout the nation, and I have done my research, and that's how my program is based off that research. Government at all levels must realize that when those are limited by barriers that, as Justice Coontz observed, are not shared by the general population. It is the duty of a moral and civilized society not merely to provide for their basic needs, but to provide for them the opportunities to be the best members of the society that their abilities permit. The overburdened agencies of state, local, and national government cannot address these issues alone, but through public-private partnerships with NGOs like No Bounds, that's us, and the private sector partners like ECPI University, we can address these needs together. What is needed is, of course, funding and other resources, but also public recognition, outreach, and support and assistance in obtaining the grants and benefits that can be made available from public and private sources, where community and government involvement are a prerequisite to consideration. They say in politics, the real question is always, what is the ask? So what does, what does the constituent want? The ask for No Bounds is to be given consideration, and if you will, a seat at the table when planning for the future of our Roanoke citizens, whose intellectual abilities challenge every aspect of their lives, and I mean every aspect, whether it is desiring to live with some level of independence, obtaining employment, participating in community life, or interacting with law enforcement and other public service providers, to guide us to the money, money sources that we can tap. Because I ask you, if you have a child with an intellectual disability, would you put money aside for college? Would you? You probably wouldn't. And 245 universities in the United States have programs in universities, in colleges, but I dare you to ask, call any of them, and what do they get at the end of their four years? A certificate of attendance at the University of blah, blah, blah. That's it. And they pay, they're made to pay as much as the ordinary student, but they don't get any classes. So you can look up Think College. It's a hub where, and you can find out all the colleges that have programs. I would welcome the opportunity to speak with the members of the council and the city administration to find avenues for cooperation to serve our community by preparing its intellectually-challenged students to become the best Roanoke's they dream of being. And Ms. Price saw me create this program four years ago, and I put it at her doorstep, and I'm here now. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions, members of council?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I realize that we're still in the public hearing section, and normally you don't ask questions, but I didn't get any information from Dr. Bandari as far as contact information. I know it's at ECPI, but I just wanted to
I do have, yes.
Understand the model. So you are a program functioning through ECPI, or is it in the ECPI program? Because you're not nonprofit, correct?
I am a nonprofit.
You are a nonprofit, so you're
They gave me the space.
They gave you the space, so you are nonprofit. You have nothing to do with these, in ECPI, you just located, your program is just located there.
But we have now become part together, but I, but I, but I am, the No Bounds stays independent.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, in my head, trying to, you're talking about funding. I'm just trying to figure out what we have and what, you know, what we might have that would be accessible for you and for this program, but I needed to understand the model.
Okay. So all we ask is someone sponsor one of those students.
Okay.
That's all we want.
Okay.
Is donations towards the students, then I can pay the instructors. Right now, all these ECPI instructors come in on their own time and teach them.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for this information, and I'm sure some of us, if not all of us, will try to reach out to you to see if they're, what kind of funding we may have for them, but I just needed to understand the model.
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
Well, we're going to ask the city man, you have mentioned
No, same thing, because we started a conversation
Yeah.
And we'll definitely, you know, continue, and as, as the vice mayor, and I'm sure the mayor's going to say as well, you know, look for some avenues and to see what's available, but you and I will personally talk again.
Okay, because just to give you an idea of what's happening, there are 1,700 children with intellectual disabilities right now in, in the elementary schools. There are 800 plus in the middle school. There are 500 plus in the high school. They're all coming out, and they need to be put to work because they want to. They want to come, and once we put them to work, they want to be there every day. Even if it's the most mundane job for someone else, it is their happiest time. So we have a workforce. We just need to put them to work.
Well, thank you. You shared some information. I didn't realize that number, large number in our school system. Well, we're going to forward that to our city manager and have him do the research and get back with us on what we can do and how it's done.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, tell me where we are now.
We are now at
We're still on the
On gun violence. We're still on gun violence.
I would now the Gun Violence Commission.
Well, as Casa Latina is leaving, I want to give them a shout-out. They are recipients of a couple of our mini-grants for gun violence prevention and intervention, and at an upcoming meeting, we'll have them share updates on that. One was geared toward women and one toward youth, so thank you all for being here.
Great.
Now you can leave. I'd like to invite our Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Team Up, led by Chris Roberts. They have been at this work now for a year, and we look forward to hearing an update from you, Chris.
Yes, you can. Just, you can put Maybe there's a port on the backside.
There should be one on the side.
It should be one on the side, if you don't see.
Maybe at the remote control for the
For the mouse.
I don't think this is coming, maybe that
You can take that out. You can take that, yes, you can take that out.
really excited to explain to you guys or give you guys a walkthrough of what we did with our first year and one day on the job. We messed our name from the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator and Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Outreach Worker into Prevention Intervention Street Team. That's been well-received, a lot better in the homes and in the community and the agencies, than walking in as the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator. We got a lot of questions about that and a lot of resistance, so we messed the name of Prevention and Intervention Street Team. So we've adopted that, and we'll continue to hold on to the first title because that's what I've granted up under until we can get that changed. What is our vision? Our vision started in this position was to create healthy communities affected by violence, prevention programming, intervention programming, enrichment and pro-social programming, engage, mobilize, and create community influences. This quote right here is important to us, myself, Ms. Antonio Stovall, Ms. Natalie Brown, because we feel like we're planting trees and we're putting seeds in the ground. We may not be here for the shade, but somebody else will be able to get that shade, and I think that quote is very important for us to remember that. One generation plants the trees, another gets the shade, South African proverb. So our title, Find It. What are we looking for? People, places, and things, quote-unquote, resources in the community. So my first four to five months on the job is finally just doing a discovery map of Roanoke City, figuring out exactly what resources do we have, who can we partner with, who can, who can we collab with, and how can we create spaces that people can receive these services and have access to it. And these individuals and these different companies and agencies that I have listed here, these are not just names on the board. These are actually agencies in which I sit in front of people, make connections with, and make collaborations where, when we bring in people for their services, they get put to the top of the list because they understand the need and the people that we're working with. So I want to recognize Roanoke City Public Libraries, working with them closely in the fall of last year, and helping put one of our outreach workers there to help support the librarians there with the overwhelming number of youth that were in that program and just visiting the library because they had no other space to go. And so we stationed one of our outreach workers there to start mentoring them, to start guiding them, to start keeping them, you know, within the realms of the rules at the library. Roanoke City Police Department has been instrumental in working with us, giving us full access to the I-Star Program, being able to get their data, being able to use the data that we get from the commission, to be able to point our services, to point us to the right direction, to be able to talk with folks who have experienced gun violence in their particular community. The Reset Program has allowed us to be able to walk those communities. As we said before, and I'm sure you guys are well aware of it, you get a different feel of community when you get out the car and walk that community, and the Reset Program has allowed us to do that and be able to get a different feel, have, get up in close and personal, talk to victims, talk to people living in their neighborhood, and experience exactly what they're experiencing in those neighborhoods. The Roanoke City Sheriff's Department, been extremely open, open, accepted us with open arms. We'll have more programming to explain to you the combination, the collaboration that we have with Sheriff Haff and Haff and his team. Noel C. Taylor, Noel C. Taylor Alternative Education Program, and Mr. Baylor, who's the director over there, has opened his arms to us to be there. That's a school with behavioral problems that the schools have identified the kids have extreme behavior problems or violence, insubordination, and irregular schools have been placed there, and they're all there on two floors, one floor for middle schoolers, one floor for high schoolers. And Mr. Baylor opened his arms to us to be there, to bring, to bring programming there this last spring, and we saw some successes there. The Juvenile Domestic Relations Court, I want to present our program and our vision to Judge, Judge Rogers, Judge Friedman, and Judge Ferguson. They're very impressed with the vision that we have, the programs that we can offer to them, to the court service unit and to the courts, and so I'm thankful for the partnership that they've established with us. The United States Attorney's Office, Western District, working with their unit there in Project Safe Neighborhoods, being able to work with those individuals there, to be able to, be able to provide services to those individuals who are on probation under the federal system, and being able to link them to services, whether vocational, employment, or case management services. They've been extremely helpful, and we've been helpful and thankful that we got that partnership with them as well. The Virginia State Police, their Intelligence Division, myself, one of their intelligence agent analysts, their senior analyst, and the court service unit director has developed and established the Roanoke Regional Gang Intel Unit, in which we meet every quarter. So all three of us chaired that, that committee, and I'm thankful for that partnership as well. The Virginia Department of Corrections, District 15, and communicating with them individuals over there to know who are returning home from our correctional centers to the Roanoke Valley, to allow me to have that information, and I can reach out to them to see who needs to be serviced, who needs some assistance, and actuate back to the community from a correctional environment. So I'm happy and appreciative of that relationship. When we get the Services Build Smart Institute, that was a place in which I had no idea that it existed, and that's a vocational school that's sitting right on the, in the Gainesboro area. And Rob Leonard, who's the director over that program, I spoke with him on several occasions, and we got a good relationship, that anyone that we come across that can benefit from getting vocational services and certifications, we can usher them into his program, and he'll get them right in. So I'm appreciative of that relationship. The Kirk Family YMCA, we have memberships there that our outreach workers have, our whole unit have, and so we have that our outreach workers can take anywhere from zero to one to eight clients in at one time to participate in all the services that the Kirk Family YMCA has, so definitely appreciative of that relationship. The Jefferson Music Lab, same, same contract, same collaboration, same commitment. Whoever we see that we come across in the community that has, you know, a musical, artistic bone in their body, and they want to fulfill those dreams, we can usher them into that Jefferson Music Lab. It won't be a charge of them. We've already built that, that contract and that connection. The TAP and Project Discovery, I spoke with Ms. Latifah Trent to understand exactly what their programming is. Again, just learning exactly where these resources are, how can we access them, and when we usher individuals into these programs, can we get priority? Because we understand that the people we're dealing with don't have the stamina to wait on return phone calls, emails, or be on a waitlist. And so these people have offered us priority once we come and bring people to their programs, which I'm thankful for. The Lampstand Safe House, which is a safe house for human traffic victims, this under Stray Street, we had an individual placed there, and she excelled in that program and graduated from that program. I'm thankful for the program and the services they have there. RV TV, I can't say enough about them. They've recorded a lot of our events. You'll see some of our events that I'm about to show you. Their work has been top-notch, and they've been extremely helpful. Job Corps, working with the Job Corps representative, and that person is in the Goodwill Building. Again, just having resources, and when we come to the Job Corps Coordinator, I know the system. She's given me the paperwork ahead of time, we can get people and extract the process to them getting into the Job Corps program. And these are adults, individuals 18 or older, or who have graduated from high school to continue their education. Virginia Western Community College as well, same connections with their support staff, with their admissions staff, bringing and making sure that Virginia Western and the citizens of the community understand it's their college, and we are the liaison between that to be able to help usher individuals in if they want to continue their education academically or vocationally at Virginia Western. The whole of government, the apprenticeship program through that has been, been a game-changer for us. We had one individual who went through the program, graduated, and worked in our planners' department, and she did extremely well, and we hope to place another individual there this fall. Create It, we wanted to create healing spaces and access to resources. So first of all, we have Mr. Stovall. He researched Native American community circles. What are those? Native Americans and their, and their tribes, they will have community circles to handle disputes, to handle anything, any concerns that the community may have, they will get in a circle and disputed and handle those disputes at the community. Young, old, wise, immature, all together, they're handling their own community and correcting the things in their community. And I have a video to show you exactly one of the community settings. We started having these community circles in May. We're up to our fourth community circle. The one circle that you'll see here, we started off at nine participants in Eureka in May, and now we're up to 60 individuals coming to these community circles. And what's more important is our last community circle this last month in September, we had about 24 about 25 participants. And what was unique about that, we had two parents who brought their sons to that community circle because they wanted them in that particular space from what they heard about the marketing and how impactful that community circle was.
You want fast internet? You want gig speeds from Cox? A gig is three twenty-somethings on one network. One rides crypto to the moon and back. Another eats seeps and breeze game.
We're having a community healing circle. So, a community healing circle is when we get the community together and we talk about topics that are important to the communities. In a community circle, we
I don't see the volume on here. There we go. Here's the volume right here, but it's already at max.
It's a particular, it's a particular method that we use in order to
Check with them. She's checking. That's it. Everything's at max.
It's the last one.
Yeah, everything's at max.
Take the healing circle. So, we have ten.
Move this down just a tad.
Circle sitting in the center, and on the outside, we have chairs as well. And then, we'll have
Start over real quick.
Hi, my name is Antonio Stovall, and I am a Youth and Gang Violence Outreach Worker. So, tonight, we're having a community healing circle. So, a community healing circle is when we get the community together and we talk about topics that are important to the communities. In a community circle, we use, it's a particular, it's a particular method that we use in order to facilitate the healing circle. So, we have 10 circles sitting in the center, and on the outside, we have chairs as well. And then, we'll have people who want to be a part of the conversation to sit inside the circle. And the people who want to observe, they sit and observe. And then, we'll also have a talking stick. I'll ask questions, and then, we'll pass the talking stick around the circle. And the person who has the talking stick, this is the person that everyone has to listen to. And then, when, once that person is done, we pass the talking stick to the next person.
Basically, we just talk about life, like, everything, like, in general, like, how we can help each other, like, uplift the kids, or if somebody's struggling in the home, how we can, like, basically, just be assistants to help any and every, everyone, period. Like, it doesn't matter where you live, where you're from, basically, just trying to reach out and just build a community.
So, we also have talked about mental health. We talked about mental health. We've also talked about the importance of just learning how to come together as a community and figure out different ways to help reduce gun violence as a collective. Because it's going to, we believe that it's not going to just be one person or one organization. It's going to be a community and a city effort in order for this to happen. So, we're trying to bridge the gap between the city and the community and bringing it all together.
They said it takes a village. Like, bottom line is the village is lost right now. So, we're trying to bring the village back. You know, and you can't be afraid to fail. Like, if you fail, get back up. And that's what we're trying to teach these kids. Like, you're not going to be successful overnight. Like, it takes time, and you will fail. I failed plenty of times, and I'm still trying.
We have the community circles once a month. This is the biggest turnout we've had so far. We probably at least have 20 to 30 people here today. That's the biggest we've had. So, every month is gone. I just want people to know that as a city, that we're really trying to tackle this Youth and Gang Violence as a collective. Like, we know as a city that we can't do it by ourselves, so we want to try to get the communities together and get other allies to help us come together and tackle this thing as a collective.
So, that was our community circle. And then, we have, in the community circle, then we have our affirmation series. That's something that we talked about with you guys last month. It's also working its way through the resolution process as being Roanoke City's affirmation. And this, today, I'm glad that we had the opportunity to be able to bring up the introduction of the affirmation series and what this looks like. Hello, my name is Chris Roberts. I am the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator, and these are affirmation stories. Affirmations are a way to bring your purpose into life through spoken word.
How's it going? My name is Douglas Pitzer, founder of Strokes and Genius LLC.
And I'm Fletcher Nichols.
And I am founder of the Encouragement Group and the author of the Royalty Affirmation.
My name is Antonio Stovall, and I'm a Youth and Gang Violence Outreach Worker. I'm so excited to be here today. You know, it's in so much leading up to this. But I think it's really important today for y'all to understand as well, why is this so important?
Affirmation stories are incredible. I mean, they've been around since the dawn of time. And it's about taking your words and what's inside of you, your purpose and your passion, and putting it into a purpose and bringing it to life. Words mean something, and words are strong. So, we can build on affirmations to change our core, to change our actions, to guide our life, to guide our community. That's the importance of affirmation.
And I started doing affirmations with my class, being an art teacher for years and African-American culture class. And I found that when you bring a group of people together and they learn to affirm themselves, and especially when you do it collectively, then they have an outlook on life that's very different. They get an opportunity on a daily basis or on a weekly basis to say the thing that they want to be, to be able to make that come to life with words. And words are very powerful, and affirmations are powerful.
So, when I think about affirmation, I think about training. Me being a martial artist, I tried to correlate that to the affirmations. And to me, affirmation is a way to train your brain to think a certain way. So, when I started to do affirmations, I wanted to train my brain to think more positive thoughts, to be more optimistic. So, affirmations are a way to train our thought process to be more positive, to have a better outlook on life. And that's when I think of affirmation, I think about affirming our greatness within us.
In the interest of time, but that gives you a gist exactly what the importance of the affirmations are over our city and of itself. We've developed so far about 10 individuals that we already have cataloged and recorded, seeing the affirmations at RV TV. We have actually nine adults and one juvenile so far who's already recorded. As the affirmation works itself through the resolution, and we get in front of the Roanoke City School Boards and get them approved, and get them on board with approving the affirmation to be rolled out in the schools, then we'll roll out this YouTube and these series in the cyberspace world. The Empathy Project also is another one of those projects in which we feel that it will create and start us on the path for community healing and creating access points for those individuals who have suffered loss due to violence and through the homicide, gun homicide and gun violence. And so, what we did was create a project with two performing, with one performing artist and one visual artist, and also partnered with the Burgling Center on this as well. And so, we have two campaigns that are up under the Empathy Project. One is the Billboard Campaign, and that's going to launch on November 1st. And the Traveling Art Exhibit Campaign will launch on October 25th. The difference between the two is that the Traveling Art Exhibit are three hollow court doors in which an artist has made a mural of that individual's life on the outside of that door. The performing artist will take that individual's life and memorialize it in the spoken word, in spoken word or poem form, and will attach a QR code to that particular door. And as it travels around the community, people can go up to that door, scan the QR code, and that spoken word will come to light as you enjoy that visual art piece. But I do have a picture that I want to share with you about what's going to be on the mural and what the billboard campaign will look like as well. We've taken pictures with individuals who agreed to be photographed. Okay, how do we make this larger, Clarence? How do we make this larger?
Madam Clerk, can we get, see if somebody in there works on this record and just have them stand by, sit here?
But as you see, the, they're all cuts of different projects, different pictures. Just this one right here.
Thank you. Stay nearby now.
So, the billboard project will look similar to this here. So, it'd be women who have suffered loss through the hands of homicide and murder that are used by guns. And these individuals agreed to share their picture and to have a statement similar to this, but we're still working on a statement. But it will be the Empathy Project, and it will be, this is the result. And you'll see a picture of a family member, a mother, with the picture of the individual who was killed. And that will be on the billboards in Lamar. Lamar has two billboards that they contracted with us to run for six months. And the one billboard would be on orange and Melrose, and the other billboard would be on the Herschberger side. As well as the digital, we have six digital billboards that'll be flashing these and running these every eight seconds across the city, as well as the burgling will have it on their main Markey billboard on Wimpson Road as well, just to bring empathy back to our community. And the importance of this project in and of itself is when we first started this job and started our way along on this project, we continued to run into victims of homicide first before we ran into the actual perpetrators. And so, as we run into these individuals, we wanted to help, we wanted to empathize exactly what their loss was and get them services. I remember a story of a lady who reached out to us in December, and I've been on a job for two months, and her, the father of her children were murdered, and the kids were living with him in Franklin County. So, now, you got a 14-year-old and 11-year-old who got to live with their mother, who don't really have a relationship and live with their father for the last seven, eight years. And so, we asked her when we were there, myself and Mr. Nichols, has anybody came to you to help you through this? She said, no one showed up. No one's been there for. So, again, in understanding what people are going through and people are suffering in silence, what we want to do is bring light to that and make sure that our community heals that, make sure our community shows empathy to those individuals who've lost. So, that was the importance of developing this project and making sure, again, to create healing spaces and access to resources. And that lady has since been seen by a counselor, since been connected to clergy, and seemed like she's on the right track to heal. And she won't be able to get over it, of course, but she will, she is on the right track to heal. Redeemed and Recovered is a program in which Ms. Brown, our outreach worker, has researched, researched, and researched this type of program for female residents of the Roanoke City Jail. Her research led to an eight-page proposal in which she proposed that to Lieutenant Tranum, and Lieutenant Tranum and Sheriff Hesse has accepted the proposal. And so, next month in November, she'll meet with that team to figure out scheduling and when she can get in there and start implementing that program at the beginning of the year, January 2023. When we say implement it, we want to strengthen, strengthen, overcome our community. So, we had a program in the spring of last year, Mothers Uplift the Mothers, creating a space for women to be able to go to and talk to each other, talk to older women, talk to younger women, to talk about how they can heal their community, how can they be a voice in their community, how can they be the change agent in their community. And so, we ran that program for four weeks. We ended that program in May, and we will be launching that program again in December of '22. And Ms. Brown will be spearheading that, and she's currently researching. Next month, it'll be, it'll be marketing, and hopefully in December, we would be launching another women's space for women to be able to have a space to go to and be able to improve, find ways to help improve their community. The Rites of Passage Program is an after-school program in which Mr. Antonio Stovall came up with this program in and of itself, and it was a very impactful program, powerful program. And that program is for ninth graders to 12th graders, and the young men. And their goal was finding purpose, critical thinking skills, healthy lifestyles. And June 30th, 2022, we graduated 12 individuals from that program. And they don't stop there with that program. There's an after-program project in which these 12 men are now entitled, well, are now embarked and empowered to do. And Mr. Stovall will have two retreats at Apple Ridge with these 12 graduates to teach them the ability to run community circles in their own school. So, creating healthy spaces with these individuals and allowing them a space in their school to be able to build out a healthy school community. So, that's their project, and that's their project that they have to go back and be able to implement that, again, under the supervision of Mr. Stovall and under the encouragement of, you know, the local principals as well. I'll show you just a couple pictures on that. Here's a video of that same group meditating of the rites of passage, and it's being led by one of their own kids.
One, two, three, four, now exhale. Four, three, two, one. Now, just breathe, in and out your mouth. In and out your mouth, out wherever you prefer. Breathe in your life.
These young men were a breath of fresh air to see. They showed up, they participated, they're becoming extremely strong and outspoken individuals at their school to combat violence in their schools. And they're looking forward to being change agents in their own school after going on their two retreats they have planned this fall. And we're just excited about those young men and be able to see them in that space. Again, it was breathtaking, and it really just gives you hope that we have ninth to 12th graders that have their head on straight and focused and wanting to do something with their own peers and lead their own peers to change. And all of that goes to a credit to Mr. Stovall and the work that he's put in with those individuals over 12 weeks. Prevention and Intervention Services, I'm pretty sure that's some of the things in which we want to get into and talk about. Our Prevention and Intervention Services, we're in our prevention stuff, the services or case managers that we apply to the individuals we come across, we're talking about those individuals that are high-risk, high-need. They may be high-risk and high-needs in the courts, but they don't have the criminal factor to get the probation services or the parole services, but we step in. And that's the collaboration that we've made with the juvenile judges and the juvenile courts. As far as the Intervention Services, those are the individuals that we have gotten certifications from the Court Service Unit or the Courts or Self Admission, that these guys are actually gang-involved gang members. And these are the individuals that we're serving in the community. And these are the individuals that we're serving in the community. Here you see some of the services, and Mr. Fields has spoke about the KC Life Skills Assessment. We do that as well. We assess their life skills, this KC Life Skills Assessment assesses life domains, family, peers, school, community. We hone in on those areas there to see exactly where they're weak at, and then we build a case plan based on their risk, needs, and responsiveness. So, there was assessments of that on that way as well. Vocational Services, Employment Assistant, Counseling Services. A Tree Planet Counseling Services is something that I happened to sneak up on through a coworker in our office, Katie Hedrick. Um, she introduced us to not Natasha, who works over there as a counselor, but it's a culturally competent service, it says Hispanic Counseling Service. And that right there proved to be extremely viable with the case that I was working with because their family was Hispanic. And so, being able to have someone who's culturally competent to be able to provide that type of counseling was like striking gold. And that lady's behavior improved and her life improved with being able to work with a Tree Planet Counseling Services. Uh, the teenage after-school program, you saw that, that's our Rites of Passage program. Academic Assistance as well, we're doing that as well for those individuals that we... Once we do the life skill assessment on them and see that they're struggling in school academically as well as behaviorally, we will link them up and get them academic tutoring as well. Um, and it'll be no charge to the parent or even the client in and of itself. Number of clients we've served, we've served two adults. Two of those adults, we had to relocate. Um, they were, one lady or one woman, she was, her husband was shot and killed, and she got threats that she would be located and something would be done to her. So, we assisted her in relocating her out of the city. Um, and it cost her nothing for us to pay for gas, pay for food, and pay for an opportunity to stay somewhere else safe. Um, and she's, she's still not back in the city, and she's planting roots in another area of Virginia, which is good for her. Another individual, he was a young man that was getting bullied, getting threats toward him. We helped, we located him with an aunt in South Carolina because he just didn't feel safe here in Roanoke City with the services we can provide. Um, our nineteen boys, those are individuals from the ROP program and individual cases. We accept cases from the Court Service Unit, DSS, school counselors, and parent referral, and word of mouth. If we can be assistance to someone, we don't turn anybody down. And whether you're an adult or whether you're a juvenile, we'll come to help if you're willing to receive the help that we're offering you. Uh, we have two females, one has graduated the program in which I lightly mentioned earlier. Um, and she is back at school, making straight A's and working a job, and she's doing extremely well for herself. We have one girl currently that we're working with now. So, those are the numbers that we've served thus far in one year. The vision for the future, to continue to research, create, and implement the unit policy. Doing the paperwork is easy, has been proven easy for Antonio, Ms. Brown, and myself. Now, we gotta make sure our policy catches up to the people, to the people work that we're doing. And so, we're researching and creating the policy that we will operate under. Improve on our two-gen perspective case management, what is that? Our two-gen perspective case management for the juveniles that we service, we not only look at the child, we look at the household. Who's in here that we can assist and improve their lives, whether it's employment, whether it's parenting skills, whether it's counseling for everybody in the family, we're looking at it as a two-gen approach. So, yeah, the young man or young woman may have ushered into the house, but we're also bringing service for everybody if they can benefit from it. Affirm Roanoke City citizens of their royalty. Again, we want to get this affirmation across Roanoke City. We need it to be in the schools and continue to affirm Roanoke City citizens, their royalty within. This right here is more of a challenge and more of a thought-provoking challenge for the agencies. In the one year that we've been here, meeting people where they are, meeting people that are broken, meeting people that are hurt, and meeting people that appear to be outcasted from the things they need to have, we can do that work. Some of the barriers have come across is we got to ask our agencies to have courageous conversations with themselves. When you hear Mr. Fields talk about mentoring, only being paid for for three to six months, that's a policy issue. And so, we have to look at that. We gotta understand the relationships and rapport go far beyond three to six months. So, we want to ask moving forward and having these courageous conversations with agencies to ask themselves, "Have our, do our will match up with our deed?" We will to do well and do well for our citizens, but in actual practice, we're kind of restrained by policies and procedures. Are we willing to look at that and ask ourselves, "Can we match our will with our deed so that we don't do more harm than good with antiquated policies and procedures?" That's the challenge, that's what we're doing moving forward. Thank you for your time, City Council.
Thank you, uh, Sir Roberts, outstanding work in a year. Between you and Mr. Fields, we got, uh, there's some hope out there for some people.
Absolutely.
We appreciate that. All right, council members, questions? I'll go to Vice Mayor first.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Roberts, and to all of the team and to Mr. Cobb, the entire gun violence prevention team. The first thing I wanted to ask you, if you could get us a copy of the presentation without the video, because not saying that my colleagues have issues with retention, it's just that we would like to have that information. Because, you know, the residents and our community ask us all the time, they're not gonna come to Mr. Roberts, or they will come to Mr. Cobb, but what are you doing about gun violence? What are you all doing? And the programs that you've presented to us today shows that there are a lot of things at work. Um, I don't know what's evidence-based and what's not, but I do know that there are a lot of programs that you've presented to us today that are very positive and that at some point, we will reap the fruits of our labor here. And so, this is all good stuff, and we just, we just need to know, you know, exactly what it is. So, appreciate, you know, that you're coming forward today. And one year, you've accomplished a lot, gives me hope with my Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. But, um, we, it's just good information to have because we get that question all the time, "What are you all doing?" And it's hard for us to convey because we don't know these details until you come once every two, three months, or how often you come. And so, this has been very helpful, and I just want to say I appreciate that. And Mr. Cobb may have this presentation and can extract it and give it to us, but if not, just the bullets with that information in it would be very helpful for me and those who do not retain as well and can't write as fast.
Absolutely, I can get that to you, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What's Beth, then?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Roberts, for your presentation. I was particularly interested in the, uh, well, I mentioned many other things you talked about, but what really caught my attention especially was the community healing circles. And I just think that's such a great idea, and I hope that you'll be able to continue to expand that, get more and more people involved, uh, even from different areas of the city and that sort of thing. And I know this is a little bit outside of your direct work that you're doing, but I think maybe you run across this. Years and years ago, I heard about something for juvenile offenders called restorative justice, where they would bring a circle of people together that were involved in that young person's life, could be grandparents or other relatives, and talk about the offense that had happened. And if appropriate, maybe at a second gathering, to bring the victims of the offense and to have that young person face them directly. Do you know whether we're doing any of that sort of thing in the city at this point?
I know that, um, last year, I talked to Eddie Smart, and he told me that he was doing something similar to that at Broken Ridge Middle School when there's disputes amongst the students, and he would have those restorative justice circles with those individuals there. But as far as in the community, I haven't saw or heard of anything like that being implemented.
So, does your knowledge of the community, uh, uh... Well, it just went out of my head, the juvenile, uh, office, they're not, they're not doing that at all?
No, not in the court service unit or even the GMB Court.
Thank you, I don't know why that went out of my head all of a sudden because I was thinking about it a minute ago. But anyway, I just think that even to the point of doing restorative justice, the sense of, you know, breaking somebody's leaves because you damaged their property or whatever, you know, "I'm gonna pay you back by raking these leaves," anything like that. I just think that's a really, because it, it, you know, you talk about empathy. I think that's something that a lot of these offenders don't really have, and that's a way to develop it so they really see the impact of what they did. So, I'll probably try to talk to some other folks about that, but I appreciate you.
Uh, anybody else? I want to just, uh, oh, I'm sorry. I hit your hair with your...
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make it real quick.
Go ahead.
I just want to say I commend you. It is so refreshing, and like someone just said, it gives us hope that we are taking care of trying to do preventive measures. And I've got a new proverb to utilize. You know, yes, we're planting that tree, and the next generation will reap the benefit of the shades. I think that's awesome. Uh, and real quickly, later on in tonight's session, today's session, Antonio Stovall is going to be appointed to our Youth Services Citizens Board. And just like you were going through all those partnerships, it takes all of us. We are building this village to circle our children and our families. So, I just commend you guys, this is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did Antonio know that?
I was gonna say, probably say, "I am." Oh, okay. I just want everybody else to know.
Okay.
Making a joke on the dice, I looked at Mr. Best, and I was like, "Oh, does he know?"
Does he know, yeah.
The vote goes his way.
Well...
Mr. Mayor?
We, uh... Oh, Vivian?
Mr. Roberts, I just want you to stress the importance of the healing circles. Most people discount them, they say, "Oh, they're just wasting time." Could you please explain that a little bit and stress the importance of that?
Thank you for asking that question because I don't necessarily know if I can really qualify exactly the feeling and the impact of those particular circles and where this, and how we transition to spaces. We started off at Eureka, I think our second one was maybe at Wimson Road Library. Our third one was at the Lawson Building, and then our fourth one was at Melrose Library. And when you're in there synergizing, you have to feel it. You will constantly, we hear, we hear the chatter as well about what is that group doing? What are they doing? If you're not initiated or you're not around that space, you gotta feel it. You know, in those community circles, there's men, young men, juveniles, old men, women in the inner circle, talking about their perspective of their community and how concerned they are about their community and what they can do to heal their own community. And everybody's voice is respected, everybody's voice is impactful, and the energy in there is just, it's just, you have to feel it. We will invite you guys to come. These things are happening every month, um, and people are talking about issues in the community that they have. And from a restorative justice lens, how do we get people to pick up, you know, the elderly's pleas? Or how do we make sure that things are not happening in front of such and such house? You know, they're talking about trying to build those connections, those relationships in that circle, and we just created a space and it just took off. Antonio created the boundaries and the rules and the importance of it, and it just took off. And so, these community circles, people enjoy those community circles. It's a comfortable space, it's nonjudgmental, it's respectful, and people leave out of there impactful. In fact, when we had the last group, the last circle at Melrose, there was patrons walking by that had to enter that circle. He said, "I just, I feel something that's in there." And then the visuals of that walking by just came in and participated in that circle. And so, it's just something you really have to feel. And in that particular circle, some of the men from our Rites of Passage, those young men, were in the inner circle, talking about our city from a juvenile's perspective and how it's important for them to do something to stop and heal our community. And that just drew people in.
Thank you.
Let me say that, uh, following up on what Mr. Best picture alluded to, we had, that's, that's been tried, I mean, it's evidence-based. We did that when I was in the Department of Corrections with inmates. We call it a circle, a dialogue circle. You have dialogue, and you have one circle, and you have two circles. The question I wanted to ask you was, how do you go about selecting the adults that are in that circle? I saw some in the first video, there were certain people in the community that talked and shared some things. Is it a method you have, or you just select certain people to be, be part of that circle?
That's an open invitation. I mean, Mr. Stovall has done an excellent job from the social media, from his social media platforms, promoting the community circle, actually taking flyers to local businesses and encouraging people word of mouth. Invite a friend, if you decide to come invite someone that you think would benefit, or you think they could provide a powerful voice to help move the community forward. So, there's nothing that's restrictive as far as like a certain person or a certain type. We want everybody there because everybody's voice is important.
Well, great. I think it's, again, I like that approach of the circles, and it's amazing what you can do in dialogue and talking about and talking through things and how that opens people's minds and hearts about a lot of things. If there are no more questions or comments, I thank you for that presentation. And, uh, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, there's some things that we need to share and, uh, that we need to share with so many of our constituents to talk about what we're doing. And I commend you for a year doing this, and my, uh... I just want to commend Antonio. Uh, when he got started, we had a long discussion in my office, he and Ted Elick and myself, about some issues. And Ted, what Ted said at that time is a factual in terms of we need to get him involved in many other things. And so, I appreciate the work that he's been doing and is doing and will do. Uh, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Roberts, for your guidance and leadership in this, and keep up the good work.
Absolutely, don't forget Ms. Brown. Ms. Brown is a part of our team, and, you know, it's something to have a woman's touch a part of our team. You know, she gives us a different perspective, and she points us in a direction that sometimes we kind of overlook. And so, she keeps us, gives us a very, very balanced approach when we're talking about programming and being able to relate to individuals we come across in the community.
Well, I've watched her face or gestures as we go through certain things, so Ms. Brown, we're glad to have you. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. So, the last part of our presentation is, uh, we're gonna hear briefly from Kingdom Harvest Church International and Total Action for Progress. Uh, Kingdom Harvest received a mini-grant, and TAP received a Violence Interruption Grant, and they've been working together on a series of events over eighteen months. And we just wanted to provide you all, have them provide you all an update on how that's going.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'm Jason Harrison, I'm one of the pastors at Kingdom Harvest Church International. Um, and my, uh, my main focus is outreach for the community ministry. And, um, we received, we were awarded a mini-grant, um, in which we decided to do a back-to-school event called Grays Over Guns. And our whole focus was just to try to make kids understand the importance of education and how your education can help prevent you from having to go to the street life. Um, in that event, uh, we had approximately, uh, seven hundred and fifty attendees. That was on, um, August the twenty-first. And, uh, we had approximately seven hundred and fifty attendees, four hundred of which were, uh, were children. Uh, two hundred and fifty of those children received backpacks and school supplies, and eighty of those, um, children received, uh, school supplies as well. Um, it was just a, um, idea, honestly, um, and I'm gonna give Ms. Stephanie Moon's Reynolds a shout-out. Um, she had spoke to a friend of mine who got in contact with me, and it was really on the whim, uh, that I got on the call for the, um, for the grants. And I had no idea what the call was, but once I got on the call and I started hearing the information, it kind of sparked something. And so, um, I work in the department that, uh, Ms. Nelson is, um, the director of, and she called me like the very next day, and was like, "What are you gonna do?" And I was like, "I don't know what I'm gonna do, but now that you ask me what I'm gonna do, it means that something needs to be done." And, um, so, we decided that we would do a back-to-school event just to kind of, to engage the community first, to engage the youth, and to, um, just give them, I want to give the kids something that they need. It could be something small as far as that school supply. Sometimes you never know how far school supplies can go. I have five children myself, so I do know how far that can go. But, um, you never know how much you can affect, uh, the community just by giving them something that they need when they go to, um, to school. And, um, as I alluded to, my five children already, that's my very, that's why it reaches home to me. All of my children are, um, middle school, high school age, and I'm always nervous about them getting into something or being, um, caught up in something that they really weren't in, but they were just there. And so, we want to do what we can do to kind of just keep the community engaged and know that it is, uh, things are going on. And so, we reached out, I reached out to other, um, small businesses and organizations across the community, and they were all on board. the community and, and they were all on board. Like we, we, it was amazing how people just jumped on board. And everything that I, that I did personally through the church was just by way of social media. We did everything through Facebook Messenger. And I just, and I made, I made a group and I just talked to the people and they just, they were on board. Everybody joined in from, from our DJs to our food services, people throughout the community, organizations that, that were worried about gun violence and things like that. And so we just got them to come aboard. And this is when Ms. Nelson, I know she's gonna step up here as well, just said that it needs to be something sustainable. This is what me and Ms. Reynolds talked about, making sure it's sustainable. You can't just have one big hit and then, then you fall off. And so this is when we partnered with TAP on the other side to try to keep events going on. And so I know Ms. Nelson will start to speak more about that, but I'll just, I'll talk to her about it just a little bit. We have events, monthly events for the next 18 months where we're gonna engage our youth in, in different ways. So we're gonna provide the activities. So in this month of September, well, last month of September, we did a kickball and we titled it kicking back a gun violence. And so we had a kickball game and then we sat down and we had an activity that talked about teamwork. And so what we're trying to do is just bring activities out for the children to bring them out because sometimes when you talk about just educating the kids, they, they don't want to show up. So we, so we're trying, trying to push the activity out there first and then once we get you engaged into the activity, we can bring the lesson behind the activity. And so we're just trying to want to just teach them just different things from teamwork, conflict resolution, generosity and gratitude, just a bunch of different things that have been lost just in, in generational gap. And so we just want to make sure we bring some of those, some of those old school methods back and then just tie it in with a new school way of doing it, so.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you all. We're excited. I'm Joan Nelson from TAP. I'm very excited to have been one of the larger grantees from the Gun Violence Commission. And I have to laugh, Mr. Cobb looked at me and said, can you really do all that? And I said, sure we can. And it's because we have great partners. And so in addition to the 18 monthly events out at Eureka, we also have several other series going on. And so wanted to talk a little bit about what we're doing. So in addition to our partnership with Kingdom Harvest Church International, we also are the partner and the, the grant received funding for Fed Up through our proposal to the Gun Violence Commission to make sure at that point Fed Up did not have a 501(c)(3) and didn't have the administrative processes in place. And so TAP is also partnering with them to make sure their prayer breakfast and their Christmas event and the work that they do through the community with gifts and gift cards to the families who are victims of violence, that that continues. We will be supporting that work for the next 18 months also through our grant. In addition, TAP has added two other things to it, actually three other things to it and we'll give you a handout at the end. One is what we heard over and over again in our community was that our African-American culture and contemporary classes out at William Fleming were great evidence-based programs that really made a difference in young people's lives. And so we were happy, part of the funding from the commission went to expand that program. We currently have added a Saturday class that's open to the public, is held at the higher ed every Saturday. We are thrilled, not only are we seeing high school age students, but we had parents who wanted to be able to attend with their student. We had some adults that wanted it. And so we have expanded and we're currently offering that class every Saturday at the higher ed center. We are also in discussions, we have two other places that have asked us to expand that African-American culture class into them. And so we're currently negotiating and working through to figure out how we expand it, how we get other qualified staff to be able to teach it so we can continue that work. So that's exciting to us. The other thing that we realized was that as City Council and Chris Roberts has been talking, this is an effort that's gonna take everyone. TAP has been working with youth for years. We have lots of evidence-based programs that we offer, but because of funding and staffing, we can't grow them as quickly as people are wanting us to or asking us to. And so we created a series of workshops that are gonna be quarterly for the next 18 months that we have identified, interestingly enough, as community healing workshop series. You will see them coming out. We'll be teaching skill sets that either you can use for yourself and they're open to the public, or you can use to teach youth or to work with other youth. Our October program, October 15th, is teaching mindfulness and actual mindfulness techniques. And we're giving the participants mindfulness books so that they have that ongoing tool to use. Our second one is called, So You Want to Be a Hood Healer, is other methods of doing community outreach and community healing. We'll have other workshops. We don't have the January through March workshop settled, but we'll have a workshop every quarter that relates to providing skill sets for people to be able to go out and help their community. In addition to that, the other program that, that we've put in is one that, that I have to say we worked with Roanoke City Police on back before the pandemic and then we've never made much progress with it, but we have reinstituted it. And it's called Coaching Boys Into Men. Coaching Boys Into Men is an evidence-based, internationally recognized program that teaches relationship skills and healthy relationships through using coaches as the messenger. And the lessons are short 10 to 15-minute lessons that are built into and designed to go into the coaching and training period. And so one 15-minute segment every week in a coach's schedule will teach healthy relationships. We also have become certified in the female version of that called Athletes as Leaders and we have started rolling that out. We will be offering those trainings to coaches, whether paid coaches, volunteers, school coaches, every quarter. Dwan Hankins is our staff person that's doing that. We're excited. TAP is the only certified program in the state of Virginia who can offer this training. And so we'll be taking it to some other cities who are experiencing violence, but we want to make sure we get it trained in Roanoke first. We've had our first two of those, have had some great people come in for training. And so we're excited we'll be rolling those out with some of the teams. I know some of the Roanoke City basketball teams are in process of rolling it out as they're gearing up for the season. We'll have another one before spring sports. But those are just some of the things we'll be doing. We've made a commitment for the whole year and a half that every quarter we will be offering both of these kinds of workshops to expand the ability to get the work done and those things done in the community. Coaching Boys Into Men and Athletes as Leaders is probably one of my most programs I'm most excited about offering. I don't know if you all remember when they did the original youth survey, when we were talking about the violence in the community, one of the number one answers in that survey was that the kids were experiencing relationship violence and they needed to be able to deal with it. And so hopefully this curriculum that we have been able to pay for and offer out, we'll be able to go out in the schools and then we should see a difference in the relationships in our communities. So we're open for questions and we have some flyers to just make sure you know what's going on in the community that you all are helping sponsor.
Well, thank you both for what you're doing and I'm very pleased to hear that Coaching Boys Into Men and then is it Mr. Hankins that's working with?
Mr. Hankins. I don't know if you all know Mr. Hankins. He is a coach at Fleming.
Yeah, I know him.
And his dad. And so he is, he's one of the trained trainers. So Mr. Hankins, Ms. Latifah Trent has been certified. We have two managers certified. And then the non-TAP staff person that originally was representing the police department, but he is still coming out and helping us, is Josh Johnson, who now is with City Public Schools. He is the fifth certified trainer for the region.
Yeah, we know Josh. He left us.
Yes, I'm sorry. But he's still doing training for kids. So he's in a good spot.
But any questions? I'm pleased to hear that. And I know for, for a number of years, we were concerned, had some issues with regards to coaches specifically, not being trained or ready. And you all do the whole, and I'm sure you vet these coaches or some of that. So thank you for that piece. And Reverend, thank you, man, for, for your commitment and dedication. I'm impressed with what we've heard, what I've heard anyway. And is this part of the presentation?
That's, that's all we have.
Those, I think those are the current things happening this quarter.
All right. Thank you.
The only other thing I would just say, I, I just want to commend you both as well. And certainly, as you get your programming and calendar, if you would send that also out so that we can in turn make sure that it's on our calendars that are, you know, things that we can participate, but also I want to make sure that it gets out to the folks that we serve with Youth Services.
Sure. I will be glad to make sure that you all get an electronic copy of all of these currently and the ones in the future. We are sending them out to the youth service provider group that Mr. Cobb chairs and, and we're sending them out through social media, but I'll be glad to get them, City Council on the mailing list to make sure all of you all are receiving it.
Joe, you also have, you have mindfulness training?
Mindfulness training, October 15th. We are going to do an initial four-hour mindfulness training.
Okay. Oh, you're gonna start it then?
So, so the, the first one, it's a four-hour training on, on October 15th, open to the public. We run regular mindfulness groups and one of the things we're trying to do is get some more people trained in mindfulness so that then we could offer them throughout the community. As with Josh Johnson leaving you, Antonio Stovall sort of moved to the city and he was our certified mindfulness trainer. So one of the things we have paid for and we've asked for in this grant is to get someone else certified. And it'll be either Mr. Hartherson or someone from his church. We are in process of getting another person certified to be a mindfulness instructor so that we have that ability moving forward. And then we'll offer it open to the community, just mindfulness hours when people want them.
Well, that's great. That's great. Any questions? Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
All right. We're now down to item 1A, Madam Clerk. Virginia Department of Fire Programs FY23, funding for Roanoke Fire and EMS. There's two measures. One is a resolution.
Who's the resolution?
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Can you read the master?
It's resolution, we tie the paragraph.
Yes. A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Fire Programs FY23 funding grant and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
Thank you. I'm pleased to recognize that Fire Chief, she was with us today. Good to see you and the staff and everybody there. Thank you all for being here today. Any discussion by members of council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we call the roll, please? Can you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price is absent right now. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Robert, budget ordinance?
Good budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, was there a change to the budget ordinance?
Uh, yes, the budget ordinance, yes. It was. There was a correction done, so we do have the amended or revised measure here.
Has it been handed to the council?
Yes, they have.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
All right. Yes, sir.
I've looked at this printed copy pretty carefully and also what was in the agenda packet on the electronic version. And I'm, I'm just wondering what was the correction?
I see it.
All right, tell me.
It is at the 2055, at the $80,000. It was, it should be 2555 instead of 2055. The account number, the last four.
I got you. I see it now.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, no, I, I mean.
I know, I was looking for it and I saw it.
I, I'm glad that we can catch things like that because it is so important. It will have to come back to us or whatever. So that's, all right. I was just trying to make sure I knew what it was.
Yes, sir.
All right, we move the second, Madam Clerk. We still reading the title?
Did we get a second? I don't believe we did. Second on the amended, I guess it was you that seconded the amended?
Well, well.
Or the revised version.
We moved.
I made the motion. What's that?
Well, we didn't do the amendment. We didn't do that. So we need a motion on the amended budget ordinance.
Yeah, we have a second.
Is it second? You got your second?
My motion was to approve the revised version that we got today.
Right, and I seconded.
That was my motion. So I don't think we need amendment.
All right, Madam Clerk? Yes.
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Fire Programs, amending and re-eradining certain sections of the 2022-2023 grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best, Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. All right, I don't know, number, I mean B, item B is American Rescue Plan Act Tourism Recovery Program. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title of the paragraph? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. A resolution accepting the Visit Virginia Blue Ridge American Rescue Plan Act Program Budget and Expenditure Plan and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute and file any required documents.
All right, any discussion? I want to recognize Landon Howard here today. Sorry we kept you so long, man, but you see what we go through down here.
And Deborah.
And, and Deborah. Thank you all both for being here. Landon is doing some tremendous work. We Visit Virginia Blue Ridge, thank you all for being here. Any other comments here?
I just want to thank Visit Blue Ridge, Virginia for stepping up to the plate and, and volunteering to help us with the Hidden in Plain sites. They have agreed to help us with the marketing. So when we do the, the contract signing and the unveiling and anything else that is related to Hidden in Plain site and the Henrietta Lacks statue, they're going to help us to facilitate that because we know it's gonna be grand. It's gonna be big. Landon's working on getting, who was that, the news reporter you said? Oh, Lester Holt. Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna have Lester Holt. I mean, we're thinking big, Oprah. And now it's, and now it's, now you're on record because you know these meetings are recorded. And, and, and we have a recommendation for Bill Whitaker. So we, we're just, it's just getting bigger and bigger. But I wanted to say thank you all for, for, for helping us with that because we realize the significance of the project and making sure that we, we get it out there and make the, all of the events associated with it as huge and as fun as possible. Thank you.
If anybody can do it, Landon can.
I, I have no doubt. But it's supposed to have been Deborah and Catherine that's working on this, so.
Well, they, they the same people. We're the same organization, but it's.
We're gonna give them credit. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, we ready to vote on that? Ready to call the roll?
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.[1757.21]
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. I have to step away. Ms. Vice Mayor will be in charge of the remainder.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Let me, let me see where we are here. Okay, um, I think we are at, um, Vice Mayor? Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Yes. I was wondering if it's possible that, uh, Mr. Howard would give a brief of how the tourism is doing in our city with all the sporting events he's bringing in? You think that's possible at this time?
Is, is he prepared to do that?
No, I just,
Or he want to come back another time?
It's just, it's just a brief summary.
He's prepared. He's always prepared.
We've all waited for it, but that's fine.
Sorry.
You know me all too well. I can always talk. But, uh, thank you all so much for your incredible support. Uh, you know, the pandemic really impact, impacted the industry in a major way. And I'm happy to say that so much of what we do is coming back strong. Especially our leisure, uh, business and the sports business has been very, very strong. Still working on the convention business. A lot of people got used to, uh, doing the hyper and the vertical and the, uh, the type meetings. And, uh, so now we just need to get more of our meetings business back. And so the, the funds that you all just appropriated, it's going to help us to, to incentivize that. And, um, I'm hoping by this time next year, we're going to be seeing, uh, very normal numbers and even better than what we've done in the past. So, uh, thank you all so much for your support. Really, really do appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Landon. Georgia Vacation Pictures is also.
Yes, yes, this is true. Um, moving on to our comments by our Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, one thing I would like to thank, the Clerk's Office and her staff, Susan McCoy, Deputy Clerk, uh, Clerk C, uh, C.C. Webb, and Donna Payne in our office along with the City Attorney's Office. Uh, about a year ago, we started on the endeavor of changing the agenda system, uh, for council meetings. And this is the first meeting in which we used a new software and was implemented. And they've done a great job over the past year getting this implemented. And with all the hard work, we only hit one issue. And it, and it, and everybody had to search for it at the last minute. It was a scribbler's error. So I'd like to commend the Clerk's Office along with the staff in my office and the City Attorney's Office on the work, on the job that they've done to get the new system in place and implement it.
I think they deserve a hand. Anything else, Mr. Greer?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to item number eight, reports of committees. There are none. Item number nine, unfinished business, none. And number 10, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Um, number one, a resolution appointing an Assistant Deputy City Clerk. There are,
Second.
Now, now that we have a second, third, and a fourth, um, Madam Clerk, I would ask that you would read the title paragraph? Yes, a resolution consenting to the appointment of Ruth Vizete Perez as the Assistant Deputy City Clerk effective August 23rd, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would, uh, is there any discussion among council? Or do you want to come up and face the camera, Ruth, so people can see? Okay.
I would just like to say before,
Okay, well, she, since she doesn't want to come up, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
I want to say, uh, Ruth has been in our office since March and she has done an excellent job. She's worthy of this promotion. She came in with her feet on the ground and running. And she has taken on all of our processes and her contribution is just so valuable, very valuable. And I want to thank Ruth for all she's done so far. She is worthy of this promotion.
Thank you so much. And, and we're just delighted that you're here. And, um, I guess our residents will have to come down to the Clerk's Office in order to meet you and see your smiling face. So, uh, is there any other discussion? Well, Madam Clerk, we'll ask, you call the roll.
All right. Uh, Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye, aye, aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd? Aye, and the resolution passes.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Oh, Mr. Best Pitch.
You see?
Aye.
She's in a row.
We're, we're so sorry. And, and you know, I'm always, used to be in the last one. And since Mayor stepped out, it threw me off my game. I apologize, Mr. Best Pitch.
That's quite all.
And the resolution passes. Uh, moving on to item 11, motions and miscellaneous business. Uh, are there any inquiries or comments by the mayor or members of council? And I would say Mr. Mayor is gone. Um, any members of council, any comments? Okay, moving on to item two. Uh, vacancies or certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council. And we do have some appointments. And I think our, uh, recorder was Mr. Best Pitch? Well, yeah, you would think, but, um, I think that it's coming after, after this.
It should come first.
It should come first, but it's coming after. So.
Let's go ahead and do it.
You want to go, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Uh, Mr. Cobb, yeah.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll? Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Um, with the appointments and the reappointments, I would ask that if you are in favor of all of the appointments or reappointments, vote all nominees. And I do think, Mr. Best Pitch, you were our recorder?
I do have the names, I believe, so let me know if I miss anybody.
We will, sir.
For the Architecture Review Board, a reappointment to a three-year term ending October 1, 2025, Kathryn Cronell, for the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals. The nominee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2025 is Daniel Colston. For the Equity Empowerment Advisory Board to complete a unexpired term that, uh, ends on December 31, 2023, the nominee is Caitlin Johnson. And the reappointment for another four-year term, uh, ending November 30, 2026 is Seglinda Candy Elliott. For the Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, uh, the unexpired term ending June 30, 2024, Marquita Turner.
Yes.
And for the Roanoke Arts Commission, I'm, oh, yes, for the Roanoke Arts Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2024, the nominee is Kathryn Cobble. For the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority, uh, the reappointment of Jeffrey Powell for a term ending December 31, 2026. For the Towing Advisory Board, to clarify that the appointment of Lee Graves Jr. is for the Citizen at Large position on that board. And for the Youth Services Board, Citizens at Large are Antonio Stovall, Monique Ingram, and Leela Hickman, waiving the residency requirement from Ms. Hickman. And then the reappointment of Jayvon Tucker and Kennedy Wade for terms ending June 30, 2023. The reappointment of Councilwoman Vivian Sanchez Jones for, uh, uh, term ending June 30, 2023. And the correction of the appointment for Councilwoman Anita Price to be, be, uh, appointed as a council member and not as a citizen at large for the term ending 6/30/24. Reappointment of Lorena Wilson for a three-year term ending June 30, 2025. That's all that I have.
And, um, the, um, the Economic Development Authority? You should have one name.
I thought we decided to hold off and discuss those names with them? We're going to cut space with them first? Yeah. That's all.